Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Greenwood.
President.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
President.
You have three presidents and two F's.
Okay, item four, presentation of the minutes from the previous held meeting on Thursday, August 11th, 2016, and the special meeting held on Sunday, August 7th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve item four?
I make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Mosley and seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes, Councilwoman, I mean Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have three I's and two F's.
Motion passes. Item five, approval of the proposed agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve item five.
Sure.
Been moved by myself, seconded by Councilwoman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have three I's and two F's.
Motion passes. Item six, reports of the Public Works Committee. Chairman is Robert Houston III. He's not here at this time. I'll go ahead and take this item. Item six A is a presentation of a resolution for the Marion City Council to see if St. Louis is entering into a contractual agreement for waste hauling services.
Waste management?
Oh.
On waste?
Waste hauling service, waste management.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve item six A?
I don't mind making a motion, but can I talk to you about something, Mayor?
Absolutely.
We had a meeting last week, I think it was Monday, I did remember. Remember that? The Marion City Manager, he was telling us that Waste Management contract was coming out, but he was giving the seniors discount. And one member asked how they know it, so maybe he can talk on that or maybe he can't. Asked the wrong thing, City Manager.
No, you're right. Mr. Dan Hamlet's here, Mayor, if you would like to have him address the council.
If Mr. Dan doesn't mind, absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Mosley.
Mayor, Council. The question at hand was, how do you apply for a wait for the senior discount? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All you have to do is show a driver's license and mail that into our filling department. And what I'd like to do is we can set something up here verbally where it comes to my office and then I'll forward that on. But all we need is just proof that some of the 55 were over and then we receive the discount.
Okay, okay. That's good. I know the seniors want to hear that because they are going through a financial burden. So, thank you so much.
I understand and that's why we put that in this code area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dan, do we have any further questions for?
I'll just add, we definitely appreciate the services of Waste Management. I believe that we did negotiate a new contract on behalf of the citizens. We've increased a lot of aspects of the contract in previous years. So, we do appreciate this management of the citizens getting a bit of a break from the contract.
That's great. And we want to thank the staff and Waste Management for renegotiating the contract so that it's greater than before to our citizens. We definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to add one more.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes, for the citizens, they get sensitive here. I think it was in there where there's no $5 charge no more to bring out a dump, to bring out a trash can. Used to be $5, didn't it, wasn't it, Mayor? Used to be $5 when they brought you out of a can. But now, I think there's no charge. Is that right?
Councilman, that is correct. Yeah, we're waiving the charge for delivery of containers. And...
Is that forever now or just temporary?
It will be going forward when the new agreement starts, which I believe will be November, November the first.
Starts then?
And there will be no charge after that.
And we got a five-year contract?
What I propose is a three-year contract with a two-year mutual option.
Oh, okay. Mayor, I'm too bad.
Okay, and that, I thank you, Councilwoman Mosley, for bringing that out. We certainly appreciate that as well, where our citizens are no longer charged that fee for a trash can. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let the city of East St. Louis do your business all these years. I've been associated with the city since early 90's. This is the first time I've been here and I appreciate it. I think you've passed.
Let me ask you a question, Mayor. Let me just ask him a question. Are you appreciative of our citizens' service to you? Are you appreciative of that?
I assure you, yes.
And can we get some, can we get? Oh, yes, another item we have, Mayor, that you get a free one-time deal on some trash. Who does that serve?
One-time deal on what else?
One-time deal when you get a certain bundle, a bundle?
You mean like for yard waste?
Yeah. Can you explain that to them?
We do not have that in here very much. What we would do for yard wastes is we offer...
Not yard waste, it was a foot of dirt.
The bulky item.
Volky item, that's what I'm trying to say.
What we are, what we're going to do, and we've had this in the contract before, this new agreement, each resident that has served the slip, can put out a bulky item every week. And what we do are mailing prior to November, we're going to put a bulky item list in there, items that are acceptable. And the, I don't think the residents have taken advantage of that opportunity. And so, I think the mailing to remind everyone that you have that in the contract would be very prudent there if we want to do that.
You were saying it, didn't you, Mayor? A bulky item, once a month or twice a month?
Once per week.
Once a week?
What I'll go ahead and do is read some of the, read the parts very briefly. It is a five-year contract, the first three years guaranteed, then the last two years and mutual options to be executed by the party. The contract will begin on November 1st, 2016. And Waste Management agrees to maintain the $1 per month charge for trash parts. They also agreed to waive all delivery fees for such parts. Currently, the contract calls for a $5 delivery fee. We will receive free landfill for city trust in the amount of 4,000 yards per year. This is an increase of 2,000 yards per year over the previous contract. Additionally, the city will receive 40 to 20-yard roll-off dumpsters per year under the contract for free. This may be used for trash recycling or yard waste. This is an increase of 15 over the current contract. Additionally, Waste Management will also provide $2,000 per year at the city's request to be donated to a community event or charity. This is an increase of $1,250 over the current contract. Also, Waste Management will also provide a bulky item pickup at no charge of one item per week per home. This should reduce the amount of illegal dumping throughout the city. Additionally, the residents are exempt from fuel, environmental, RCR, and administrative fees. Waste Management also agrees to mail all the current residents to inform them of all of this new information. So, I just wanted to kind of read that so everyone can be clear.
Thank you, Mayor.
Again, we want to thank City Manager and staff and Mr. Dan with Waste Management for our upgrade and our contract. We appreciate that. And I'd like to, is there a motion to approve item six A?
I make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Mosley, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Yes.
You have three I's and two F's.
Motion passes. Item seven, reports of the Finance Committee. Councilwoman June Hamilton-Dane is not here today. I know this is for, we have two amendments that we won't be able to do because we're votes. So, we have to skip items seven A and seven B for lack of a four. And reports of the Public Safety Committee. Councilwoman Greenwood, do you have anything?
I think about the Public Safety Forum.
Okay. Okay, there will be a Public Safety Forum. And Chief, can you come forward to kind of give the citizens the date and kind of tell them a little bit what it's about? We've had it before, it's a great forum. I just want the Chief to kind of highlight it a little bit.
It'll be Monday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. It's our second Public Safety Forum. And what it does is we want you, the citizens, to come out and put a face with some of the people in different departments, whether it be your fire police, emergency services, Department of Children and Family Services, Behavioral Health. As a matter of fact, we have a representative from Crime Stopers. And you often hear her say when a crime happens, call Crime Stopers. So, the representative is going to come and share with you all. Because a lot of times, the citizen says, well, I don't want to call because I don't want to get my information out. And they'll show that you can call the number, it's anonymous, you'll go online, it's anonymous, and they'll give you information. All the individuals present, we have individuals from the Illinois State Police as well. And what they'll do is they'll give a brief presentation, tell you about the department, give you some of the services they offer to you, the citizens, because a lot of things that are offered that you don't know. And after everybody does the presentation, everybody will have booths set up. So, if you have any further questions, you'll be able to go to the booth and get information. And also, there'll be a few vendors there as well. But it'll be September 20th at 6:00 AM.
Okay, thank you, Chief. We want to encourage our citizens to come out for the Public Safety Forum.
I'm sorry, it'll be in the return, I'm sorry. Downstairs, I'm so sorry.
Anything further from Public Safety? Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Item nine, reports of the Community Development Committee. Councilwoman Mosley.
Mayor, can you take that? Is it, I'm kind of looking over.
Okay.
It was about Cohopea?
Yes. Item nine, A, we have a presentation of a resolution to preserve the Mississippian mounds culture by elevating the national status of Cohopea Mounds and associated mounds complex. And this is a resolution that a lot of the surrounding cities in our region are signing to support the idea of the mounds, Cohopea mounds, becoming a national historic, having national historic status. So, I can re, I'll read a little bit of it so citizens can kind of get a clear understanding here. Well, it's a lot to read. I'll skip, I'll skip a little here and there, but I just want you to get into our ideas. "Whereas, long before Lewis and Clark, our region was home to the ancient societies of Mississippian culture and the beginnings of urbanism in the eastern woodlands. It was from these societies that today's Great Indian Nation sprang. With cultural connections from the Great Lakes to the Gulf of Mexico and along the mighty Mississippi, their beginnings of this urban civilization spread over six counties of eastern Missouri and southwestern Illinois. And whereas, here at the seat of renewal, the fertile American bottom stretched bluff to bluff as the confluence of America's greatest rivers, the Mississippi and Missouri rivers. And whereas, dating from the Mississippian period, 800 to 1350 AD, Cohopea Mounds covering 3,950 acres is the earliest and largest pre-Columbian archaeological site north of Mexico. And it is the preeminent example of a cultural, religious, and economic center of prehistoric Mississippian cultural tradition, which extended throughout the Mississippi Valley and the southeastern United States." I'm going to skip down a little bit. "And whereas, Cohopea Mounds and its ancient, non-contiguous satellite settlements are today in desperate need of additional protection to secure the most significant remnants of the largest Native American civilization in the North American continent, north of Mexico, from active and passive threats. And whereas, since 2012, with guidance from the Indian Nations, federal agencies, Illinois and Missouri State Agencies, and local units of government, Hartland Conservancy developed a thorough, compelling, and rigorous study, called the Mounds: America's First Cities Feasibility Study, that met the National Park Service's standards and criteria demonstrating the feasibility of elevation, of the elevation, of elevation, the status and national designation of the Cohopea Mounds, the surrounding mound complexes in the region, and their significance, suitability and feasibility as a potential formal unit of a national park service, which would ensure that these precious ancient archaeological resources are protected and accessible for all people to experience. And whereas, there is a strong consensus that now is the time for immediate action to develop the site to realize its full potential now more than ever. Urgency is a great concern with new transportation access across the Mississippi River completed and the rebound of the economy, the area under even greater development pressure. Resolve that, the Mississippi St. Louis joins the governor and the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency in asking the Illinois citizens and communities to actively join Hartland Conservancy and the Mississippian Culture Initiative that we urge Congress to pass a bill establishing Cohopea Mounds and thematically connected mound complexes deemed to be symbolically nationally significant and in public ownership as the Mississippian Cultural National Historic Park. And our California President Barack Obama to exercise his authority by executive order under the Antiquities Act to designate them as a national monument. So, here, the Hartland Conservancy has petitioned many cities in our area to preserve the Cohopea Mounds as it is now, and not only to preserve it, but to deem it a national historical park. So, this resolution would just support the idea of them petitioning for president and Congress for this to be done.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Is there a motion to approve item nine A?
I make the motion, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Mosley and seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
You have three I's and two F's.
Motion is passed. Item 10, do you have any old business? City Manager, do you have any old business? Any old business from council? And item 11, new business?
Mayor, I just want to ask you a question. When are we going to start on the old property hotel? Is that in the future?
Well, that's definitely in our future, which we're currently working on some things as far as economic development is concerned. I know we initially had McCormick Baron working on that. Right now, I don't know if they still want to stick with the property hotel or not. I'm not sure about that, Councilwoman Mosley.
Who do we share with?
McCormick Baron.
McCormick Baron, do you have any, any, ever talked with him?
Yes, we are, we are. I did have one meeting with McCormick Baron that relates to development, Councilwoman Mosley, housing development. And we are working with McCormick Baron. We're also in conversation with the Housing Authority. We do have a vision to develop our housing in this area, specifically in the downtown area. So, yeah, we're doing a conversation.
Mayor, last, last, when you went out to Eastway Gateway meeting, I, after the meeting, I was talking to some people that was telling me that the guy that we got who'll be doing 10th Street done bought old stocks. Have you heard that?
I just heard it recently from our economic development manager. Yes.
What's going on here?
I have no idea. City Manager, do you know? And I don't see the sign up there anymore, so I'm not sure. Attorney, is there not a deadline on them producing as far as that Harvest Grocery Store is concerned?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, there is, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I would think it's the end of this year. They're already behind schedule. But I think the project has to be completed by December 31st if memory serves. This is the end.
And if the project, can you tell us and the citizens, if they are not, if the project is not completed, because I know there are some ramifications for that, but I would like it to come from you, if the project is not completed by December of this year, what are the ramifications of that?
Well, we're talking about the harvest market.
That's correct.
Harvest market was backloaded so that the city's money was not to be injected into the project until the project was completed. So, what happens is our agreement is used by the developer to leverage his private equity fund on the front end of the project. Then our funds are injected once private equity funds are expended. So, there is no expense to the city in the event the project doesn't come to fruition because our money is not injected into the project until the project itself closes. So, the penalty to the project is the financing will fall apart because our money goes away. So, if they're out of schedule or if they're out of compliance with our agreement, we have an option to walk away from the agreement. We can have to inject the money. That would then cause their private equity to have, I would think, reservations about dispersing funds in the project that we would not be, then required to put money in and in. We've not physically given them anything. No, we have not. We have not physically given them anything and we won't until the project closes.
But on the Economic Development Council, we still have our economic development manager who is working on the project that I, kind of briefly brought before council, maybe a week or so ago. I'm giving them a time to fully develop the plan as far as our downtown area. And of course, we want that housing development to take place. And we are arranging to have some meetings for that as well. But councils will definitely be updated on everything as well as the citizens as far as our housing development.
And let me ask you, one of our projects that we had going and see like if it was going to go, Slay Industry, do they contact you about anything?
Yeah, I've spoken with Slay. Matter of fact, I spoke with, it hasn't been recently, but I spoke with them earlier part of this year or last year. And the project that we have going on with them is the port of St. Louis, that project.
Right.
And those funds have been tied up with the state due to the budget, you know?
Oh, budget.
Yes, definitely, yeah. So, if you can...
I understand. Thank you, Mayor, for so much for the explanation.
Yes, sir. New business? Do you have any new business? City Manager comments? Nothing, nothing after that. City Council comment? Councilwoman Mosley?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman. Okay, we'll go straight to citizens' comments then. Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor, I know I don't always say that I do appreciate everything you do and the city manager is doing for the city of East St. Louis. And I realize it's a thankless job. And I hope you will continue what you're doing and trying to get things done. But at last council meeting, Councilwoman Mosley wanted me to know how I get my facts and information since I come to for council every month and have different grievances. So, I thought I would just bring him, I would just share with you all three minutes because I know that's what you want to keep too, three minutes of information. And the first one was about the murders and the gun violence that surround the city, that the citizens was begging the ex-mayor to do something about which he refused, even with the third one. So, I documented a schedule of the murders. There, in one year, there was 10 and two at the surface station of murders and gun violence. And you didn't get this, but as a citizen, doing what citizens want, being concerned, you made legislation to stop that. The second one that I did was a book about Welcome to the City of East St. Louis, where life is more abundantly, but not for the citizens. And this is all the documentation and all the gun violence and all, everything that had happened during that time. The third one was the code enforcement. The city of East St. Louis without code and law enforcement. And it talks about the police department saying that they, they were concerned. So, this addressed what the police officers were talking about, their concern with their safety. So, if police officers are concerned with their safety, you can imagine what the citizens are. So, in 2011, when life more abundantly, gone again, that was, I went through all 25 precincts, walk lists. I went through all 25 absentee. Took me four months to find out how you all were winning the election. And it's not with the citizens. This one was about the 10 murders. I mean, the 10, this was about a whole lot of stuff. It was about the 10 years with 11 police chief in the city of East St. Louis. It was about all the HUD, the prosecution, the federal programs, just, just everything that was going on about, about the city officials, the indictments and everything. And then this one was too little, too late because nothing was ever done about all of this stuff, pretty much. And this one was still about some stuff that I, more information that I gathered. And when you took office, I thought I was at ease. I rested because, you know, transparency and all that other stuff was trying to take place. And lo and behold, yet they hired the ex-mayor as city manager again. And I had to get busy. So, in August of 2015, this was showing all the incompetency of the last administration that was coming back into your administration. And then in September, I had to do another one because the madness continued. So, this is just a fraction. I have a whole block of eight years of stuff. So, I really appreciate you. I really appreciate the city manager for being competent because with you all in charge, I can rest a little bit. And maybe we can get some, some organization and maybe we can get some, something done in the city of East St. Louis because life more abundantly is going to go down in the history of East St. Louis as one of the worst administrations in the last eight years. And I have all the documentation in case, if I want to see it.
Thank you, Ms. Joshua. Ms. Anthony Kopp.
Thank you, Mayor, for taking my time. The Land Town residents do have concerns. We only have about a million of them, but I only have three questions to ask. I would like to ask about our water quality. Where do we... Where do we see that report here in City Hall? And, uh, is there any lead substance, uh, substance in it? Also, my second question is, um, what are we doing about the Zika and the West Nile virus? Are we protecting the citizens from that? And the third question is, does the city have any credit cards? And if so, how many?
Yes. I'll answer that, I'll answer that, uh, the last one first. We don't, I don't have any credit cards in my office. City Manager, do you have any credit cards in yours? Do we have any credit cards as a city? No, we don't have any credit cards. None, none. So that's, that's the answer to the last question. I wanted to make sure I answered that one right away. And what are we doing about the Zika? I'm going to have, is Ms. Gerstke? And Mr. Benson, and Mr. Benson, what are we doing about the Zika virus? And also water quality and lead substance. Can you, can you address that if possible?
Well, one, one of the things that, that we do, uh, we coordinate with the Eastside Health District and they, uh, their environmental services. And they have, uh, Special Agent Myla Blanchard. She's responsible for, I'm looking into the possibilities of the Zika virus and West Nile coming into this area. And she keeps the city informed as far as if there's a threat, um, in conjunction with St. Clair County Health Department. So that's where we get all the information. The public works don't do any studies, uh, emergency services don't. But we coordinate with people in the, in the health department that gives us that information that we need.
And for those who don't know, Mr. Benson is our Emergency Services Disaster, uh, Manager. And, uh, he is the one who, who is keeping us abreast of anything that, that concerns us far as emergencies, um, any type of natural disasters that would occur. We've had several, uh, emergency services, um, forms, um, this year. Um, and so those, those are very important for our citizens to attend because issues like this need to be addressed.
And let's just inform you, Mayor, uh, as we've coordinated, uh, somewhere around the middle of October through the, uh, beginning of November, the actual director of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency is actually going to come to the City of St. Louis and begin to talk even more directly about the powers, about the, the, uh, importance of actually addressing emergency management. And, and I think from that, we'll get a lot of good information, because we only had probably one director, uh, from the state level to come down to the city as far as the director. We've had a lot of coordinators. But director, this would be the second one that ever came to the city. So we'll get a good idea of what emergency management looked like, even from the state level and how coordinated with the local level.
And then there was one, uh, other question about the water quality.
Do you have any information on that?
Illinois American Water Company does give water tests for this area. They provide that report, Illinois American Water Company.
Okay. Do we have, uh, a copy?
I never had a copy, but we requested.
Can we request a copy for, uh, water quality? For lead substance?
You're talking about, uh, so we're talking about the same thing. You're talking about the actual drinking water, water company. It's all from Illinois American Water. Illinois American Water Company will have that data actually available for you.
It does.
I'm sorry.
They don't have, the city doesn't have it?
That's not our utility. So it's not, it's not information that is provided to us on a regular basis. We could ask for it. But the utility is required to have, the, the utility is required to have that information on hand. And if the residents make a call, we can get that information running available. We don't, the, the Illinois American Water Company is a separate entity from the city. We don't have.
What was your question?
No, I just would think that you would have a copy of that here in the dial someplace. Like Ameren keeps track of that. That's not.
I mean, by the same token, we don't have records on how much electricity everybody uses because Ameren keeps track of that. That's not anything that has to do with water service. It's something that the water company takes care of, anything.
You're talking about the safety of the citizens. And I would think that you would be concerned about that.
We are.
Okay, we do have one citizen.
Speaking of lead, the schools in St. Louis are, are, they're doing studies for all their schools. I guess you have nothing to do with the school system?
That's district one. That's correct.
Well, they, they done studies in St. Louis about the lead quality of the schools. We should be aware of that, too.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question about, a few months ago, you guys passed the ordinance, I think, because Ameren was going to do some developing in forty-six oh one state?
No.
And then, um, then I, then I, I've, uh, given information they had pulled out of that. And I wanted to know why they, they pulled out of that.
Um, Ameren, we, we didn't pass anything. They did come in and present some information to us about, uh, some work that they were going to do in the area. Uh, I was not aware that they had pulled out. City Manager, do you?
It's a cleanup project. They should have been.
No, not that project. There was another project. No, that they were going to do some, build a building or, or do something at forty-six oh one state. And they have since pulled out of that. And I, and I thought I would call it coming up, you know, for, you know, a few months ago. And then they have changed their minds. I just wanted to know, you might know why.
I haven't, Ms. Franklin, that's something that I would have to research or talk to someone about. I haven't, um, no one from, no representative from Ameren has talked to me, said they pulled out of anything? Or?
Would you like to send you the copy if you need?
That's fine. That's fine. I mean, I'm saying.
Yeah.
That communication has not come to me.
Mayor, that's not the one that's on twenty, I don't know, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-seven, they, uh,
No, it's like forty-six oh one state. Yeah.
Two level one, two level one.
Yes, it's two level one. Last citizen comment?
What you might be speaking of, I believe it was in February, they came in and asked for a bearing.
Yes, right.
Uh, so that they could, they didn't really speak about what they were going to do. So they asked the bearings to bring in large equipment. And it was at the old shop city property. But I would have to, I, I'm not certain of anything about what you said it's all about. But that's, that's probably what you're talking about. They came to, to apply for a bearing.
Okay, so, so what we will do is we'll investigate that, frankly, and see what's going on. Um, at this time, I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out. Uh, we want to encourage you. Our council, we would really appreciate it. And, uh, bring someone along with you. At this time, I'd like to, and the motion to adjourn, is needed. Do you make your motion? Madam President, you've been out there.
Councilwoman Lowsley? Councilwoman Hamilton Dean, Councilwoman Hamilton Dean, Councilwoman Hamilton Dean.
I have, I have.
Yes.